Hey, Jeff, how are you? Alright, we're gonna call this meeting to order at 7:15. All members are here and present. If everybody could, just make sure your microphones are on. Push the little button forward or turn it off if you don't want me here. Moving on to Mr. Kennedy.
We send you to God to bless this meeting of the Board of Education. So God will rule over our hearts and our minds that all your deliberations and decisions, in accordance with your will, can lead to the advancement and welfare of the community of Stratford that we serve. Amen. You serve the Lord. Over that. Let your allegiance be the fire of the United States of America. To the glory of the Lord, for this day and this time, my nation under God, in this world, with liberty and justice as our own.
Alright, so we've got a lot of good things happening here with the Board of Ed. The Strategic Operating Plan has started their work. Cell phone task force has completed its work and sent it to the Policy Committee. The Bylaws Committee completed their work, sent it over to the Board, which we've had initial review for new bylaws. We're waiting to hear from the town, actually from the council. The mayor's approved our budget. We're waiting to hear from the final, which seems favorable. We've begun talking to the mayor and her staff about the capital improvement plan. So we've got a lot of, a lot of good things happening. We've just hired two principals. So our superintendent, as you all somewhat are aware, we entered in negotiations with her for a new contract, or for a contract. So we've got a lot of good things happening, I think, I think with the warm weather too. It brings about a certain happiness and peace of mind now that we're getting to the end of the school year. People are looking forward to that, seeing summer around the corner. So we'll continue going. We've, this board has done a lot over the last year and a half, and we'll continue in that vein. You know, our, our, our goal is always to improve the environmental, education environmental for the students, make sure our students and staff feel supported and appreciated, and make sure that they have the resources they need. So we will continue in that vein, and we've got about six months left with this board, so hopefully we can finish on a positive note. That being said, we have two speakers. And it is, let's see, Jennifer, and you guys can pick, do you already wanna go in? Jennifer and Kara Cummings. It's up to you who might wanna go first. Okay. And if you could, just state your address, your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Sorry. Uh, she should say her address right. Okay, um, my name is Kara Cummings. Uh, my name is Kara Cummings. I'm in sixth grade, going into seventh in September. And this was gonna be my third year going into band camp. It was so fun. There were some really nice teachers and some high school students that volunteered. And it was where I learned my clarinet. And my sister Erin was so excited for, um, she was in the audience, and this was her first year, gonna be her first year going to band camp. But, um, it got canceled due to funding. And this is some kids' only camps to go to during the summer. This is the only pre-chemistratory, like, this is their only funding to do during the summer. So, and I also, and these two people standing behind me, these are some students that were gonna, either gonna do the band camp or were in the band camp. Hi, guys. Okay, um, so, um, I really hope you can find the funding for it this year or next year. Thank you.
Before you walk away, you've got your instruments. You wanna like give us a thirty second rendition of something you learned?
They have wonderful concerts every Thursday at the camp. I don't know if you guys had a chance to ever go in the summer. It's so wonderful. It's such a great, I just wanna echo Kara's comments. It's such a wonderful program. I can't thank you enough for supporting it. I don't know how long it's been. Kara's been in it twice. Just wonderful. Mr. Babbie says it's like seeing the, it's the All-Star camp, and he can get through double the pieces he could in the regular classroom. So, um, it's just such a great learning experience for the kids. And I just wanted you to see how much it's meant to, to the kids, and hope, I, we just hope you can find the funding for it. We'd love for it to come back this summer. If it's too late for the summer, um, maybe you could show us. I, I have heard that it will be coming back next year. We'd love to see, like, is there a line item? Like, is that guaranteed? And, let's just see, I think that was all of the points I wanted to make. So thank you for giving us the time to speak today. Thank you.
So just so you know, I mean, we, we've talked about it a bit. That wasn't SFR-funded program. It was a federally funded grant for a certain allocated amount of time. I know we are aggressively looking for other grants, and I see Ms. Borges nodding her head, so I think we're, we, no promises yet, but I think, it is something we'd like to see continued, but it was a grant-funded program, and hopefully we can continue with it. Thank you. We have the Attorneys' Report this evening, no state legislators. Oh, sorry, I did it again. Students' Representative Report, Zoe Bernard.
Good evening. My name is Zoe Bernard, and it's a pleasure to be able to speak to you all this evening. I hope everyone enjoyed their recent April break. Stratford High School would like to congratulate Superintendent Borges on her appointment as Superintendent of the Stratford Public Schools. Superintendent Borges, congratulations from everyone at Stratford High School. We wish you continued success in your new role. Now, on to the amazing things we have been doing at Stratford High School this past month. Stratford High School has just learned that our own Max Owen has been named a prince for the upcoming 2025 Barnum Festival. This is a well-deserved honor for an amazing young man. Congratulations, Max. We are happy to announce that last week we completed our Spring Point visit. During this time, we are observed and rated against their indicators of school quality. We received outstanding ratings for positive relationships where they said, "The staff at Stratford High School actively seeks to build nurturing and trusting relationships with all students. Adults are accessible, supportive, and trustworthy." And progression, transparency, and feedback where they said, "Stratford High School empowers students to independently monitor their grades and progress by providing tools and experiences to support students in owning their academic growth and progress to graduation." We have a lot of work to do, but this is reinforced, but this reinforcement shows us that our efforts are paying off. Stratford High School would like to congratulate Kathy Mack. After winning the Fairfield County and the State of Connecticut Award for the Best Teacher of American History, she recently learned that she finished third nationally. Congratulations Kathy Mack from everyone at Stratford High School. Stratford High School's Stock Market Team, the Stratford Godfathers, qualified for the national championship. Unfortunately, because, because the competition date falls on graduation, they will not be attending. Well done and congratulations. Our band, oh, our band recently performed at Carnegie Hall and did a wonderful job. This came shortly after the jazz band competed in the National Jazz Festival in Philadelphia, where they finished fourth nationally. Congratulations to Doc Ryan and all of his students. In the STEM department, on the science side of things, we just finished our initial administration of the NGSS exam. Science National Honor Society will say goodbye and good luck to the ten members of the class of 2025, and officially induct thirty-six new members in the class of 2026 at the induction ceremony on Friday, May 2nd. On the math side of the department, after Mrs. Poole and the math team came in first place at the MAPP competition at Southern Connecticut State University in March, they helped at the Worcester Middle School STEM Night. During this event, our representatives helped run stations and interacted with middle schoolers to promote the love of math and science. The Stratford High School chapter of the Math National Honor Society wishes these thirteen students all the best in the next chapter of their journey, but are also preparing to welcome seventeen new inductees at the induction ceremony on Friday, May 2nd. All are invited. The Humanities Department is riding a wave of joy with the arrival of our evidence-based reading and writing SAT scores. Students' meeting benchmark increased by ten percent, and all demographic subgroups made impressive improvements, which speaks to the teachers' focused efforts on instruction. In Mrs. Albanese's Grade Nine English classes, students have focused their energy on exploring censorship and book banning via an argumentative essay. Students explored the ways in which texts tackle contemporary issues of ableism, sexism, and racism. In Miss Cass' Grade Ten honors class, students are exploring texts that question to what extent hate speech should be protected by the First Amendment as a part of the prospective unit. They are engaging in literature circles, engaging in civil discourse that justifies their reasoning. In Mr. Lapia and Ms. Tonzola's CP Modern World History courses, students are engaging in the redesign of a summative assessment that explores whether war is justified. Students will be paired with different sides of the issue and, and be presented with scenarios that challenge them to think critically, ensuring that claims and counterarguments are addressed appropriately. Speeches will be written with the class acting as parliament, and a portrait of a graduate reflection has been integrated at the conclusion of the task. The School Counseling Department has been working with students to help them solidify their post-secondary plans. Seniors are preparing to make their final college commitments on May 1st, National College Commitment Day. On March 26th, ninety-six point nine percent of our eleventh grade students completed the SAT. During this time, seniors completed their mastery-based credit portfolio, and ninth and tenth grade students had the opportunity to work on grade-level college board lessons with school counselors. On March 31st, the admissions counselor from UConn came to Stratford High School to celebrate all of the students who were accepted into UConn and to answer any questions that they may have. Counselors who went into the junior English classrooms to deliver post-secondary planning lessons, where all juniors were exposed to the post-secondary planning options. In athletics, spring sports have started up. Boys and girls track have already had several athletes qualify for SWCs and states. Our boys and girls tennis teams are enjoying their new courts at Longbrook Park. Stratford High School has an increase of fifty percent participation in tennis from the prior year. Baseball and softball played Banelle in non-league games during spring break week. Banelle softball defeated Stratford six to three. Stratford baseball deleted Banelle, defeated Banelle four to zero. The league games will take place this Wednesday, April 30th, at Penders. Baseball held an Old Timers' Day honoring a number of former athletes from multiple generations. They will hold a light blue game on Monday, May 19th versus Notre Dame. All donations will go towards pro-state cancer awareness. Girls Lacrosse will hold a mental health awareness game on Thursday, or Tuesday, sorry, May 6th. All proceeds will go towards the cause. We are asking the Stratford Youth Programs to attend the pre-game ceremony with our girls. Since college admissions season is coming to an end, as a senior who was brought up in Stratford Public Schools since first grade, I'd like to share a bit about my own college application process. I spent the summer and fall of my senior year researching many universities, attending prospective student information sessions, meeting with guidance counselors, and asking for letters of recommendations from my teachers. In the fall of 2024, I applied to over ten institutions who had programs that I felt best aligned with my career goals. After receiving my acceptance letters, in much deliberation, I am blessed to be able to announce that I will be joining Cornell University's class of 2029 and majoring in computer science. Stratford schools have really helped shape me as a scholar and have contributed to who I am today. I would like to thank my family, my teachers, my coach, my guidance counselor, Ms. Cobza, and Ms. Della Pano for supporting me throughout my academic journey and proving how the town of Stratford is always uplifting and advocating for their students. On this note, I want to thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today, and I hope everyone enjoys their evening.
Good evening. My name is Jenna Bernardo, and it is a pleasure to speak with you this evening. It's hard to believe that the end of this year is around, right around the corner. At Banelle, we have hit the ground running with events and celebrations. Firstly, we would like to congratulate Banelle Junior Lindsay Basil, who was named the 2025 Barnum Festival Princess at the coronation at Vazano's Four Seasons last evening. Congrats again. In STEM courses, many students are preparing for AP and ECE exams this season to have opportunities to earn college credit while in high school. Honor Societies in Science and Math will welcome new inductees in the school-wide ceremony in June. New school day SAT data from this spring has been released, and an initial analysis shows improvement in the school-wide math performance. In mathematics, two teams from Banelle successfully competed in the Southern Connecticut State Math Competition. On May 1st, we would like to welcome JP Morgan and Junior Achievement for our annual Financial Literacy Day in math classes. Math teacher Betsy Hull attended the Atomic Conference and brought back a number of resources to share with her colleagues in the Banelle Math Department. In science, Banelle Juniors took the NGSS Summit of Assessment to measure their science content knowledge and skills last Tuesday, April 22nd. These results inform students, staff, and families about how we can support our learners and improve science instruction in Stratford Public Schools. On March 27th through the 29th, physics teacher Christian Record attended STAS's National Conference on Science Education in Philadelphia, where she presented a session with three other state teachers of the year. Over fifty educators attended their session. Ms. Record also brought home many resources to share with her colleagues. In humanities, students have had a fantastic time at the annual Poetry Fest. Thank you to Ms., Mrs. Kim Kolenich and Mrs. Ashley Ravel Lynch for their work in delivering spoken word poetry to students. Set to the background, or backdrop, sorry, of jazz music, the library was full of students who were able to unwind with snacks and coloring while listening to poetry. In other news, SAT scores showed improvement across the board in reading and writing. Teachers are continuing to work hard to prepare students for AP testing in the coming weeks. In the Guidance Department, AP testing will begin for registered students May 5th and continue through May 16th. Students and parents should be checking their emails for specific information regarding testing times, dates, and et cetera. We continue to celebrate the success of our senior post-secondary plans, including all of our college acceptances, military enlistments, and trade program commitments. The Guidance Team is looking forward to our Senior Scholarship Night scheduled for May 22nd, 2025, where our seniors will be recognized for various achievements throughout their time at Banelle. On May 21st, school counselors Alice Borgeson and Amanda Farrar will attend the UConn ECE Site Representatives Conference. The information will be brought back to Banelle and shared with all colleagues, students, and families who will participate in the UConn ECE program. Throughout the 2024-2025 school year, two hundred and fifty-six students were enrolled in UConn's ECE program at Banelle, registering for twelve, one hundred, or I'm sorry, one thousand, two hundred and thirty-three credits. Each year, our enrollment grows. We hope to continue with that momentum in the 2025-2026 school year. In our Fine Arts Department, Banelle Stage Theater Program is excited to announce that our spring musical is Disney's High School Musical. Mark your calendars for our performance dates, May 8th, 9th, and 10th. The Spring Music Department Concert is May 20th at 6:00 PM. Please come support the choir, band, and orchestra. The Banelle Indoor Drum Line and Winter Guard have just finished their seasons off strong. On March 29th, at Guard Championships, the Banelle Winter Guard finished third place in their class and seventh place overall out of, out of over twenty Guards in Connecticut. The Indoor Drum Line had their championships on April 5th, and they finished second in their class and third overall out of sixteen percussion groups. They both had fantastic performances, and we are looking forward to 2025 Marching Band Season starting in September when we return back from break. In our Athletics, Mateo Jasso for baseball and Sidney Sedlock for softball have been recognized as our Athletes of the Month in April. Congratulations to Junior Lindsay Basil, who broke the school record in the hammer with a toss of one hundred twenty-one to eight. On May 1st, Tyler McDivitt and Daniel Susi will be recognized at the SWCs and Unified Sports Banquet. On the same night, Sidney Sedlock and Diallo Cohen will be receiving the SWC Scholar Leader Awards. On May 4th, Daniel Susi and Diallo Cohen are to be recognized at the CIAC Scholar-Athlete Banquet Awards at the AquaTurf. On May 16th, senior members of the Boys Basketball Backseat Championship Team will be recognized at the Sterling House Celebrating Breakfast. In our Unified Sports Program, they were awarded the Spirit of Inclusion Award, and this is, this was awarded to three high schools by the CIAC. Banelle representatives Joey Darbilly and Mary Kat and their families attended a banquet at the AquaTurf in March. Tonight, Jordan Colacurcio and Diallo Cohen are the Banelle recipients of the Michael's Cup One Athlete, One Partner Award, represented by the CIAC. In our Student Government, they are working in conjunction with the Leadership Council to sponsor and organize the Carnival of Inclusion. And furthermore, they are planning on having our last Spirit of, Spirit Week of the year in May. Our Bulldogs in Training Advisors, Michelle Scaramaccia and Anthony Fiore, as well as mentors Sofia Vieira and Kimberly Montenegro, have been invited to present their mentoring program at the TLFA May Institute's Human Resource Library at Sacred Heart University on May 5th, or 15th. Our Interact Club was able to host their annual egg hunt at SHL for kindergarten in first grade. They will also be volunteering at Second Lane for their field day on May 23rd. Thank you and have a great rest of your evening.
So now, will you ladies be joining us next month? I know you have one month on the schedule. Will you both be coming? Yeah? So if you could, maybe, being that it's your last month, maybe you can come and share with us a small piece of Stratford that's meaningful to you, that will, that you'll take with you and, and guide you as you move into your post-high school careers? Just an opportunity to kinda share with us a little bit about yourself, so if you could, that'd be awesome. Thank you. Alright, moving down the agenda, State Board of Ed Report. Ms. Record?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you about what's gone on with the State Board and the State Department of Education over the past month. The most recent State Board of Education meeting was Wednesday, April 2nd. You may recall that just prior to that, on March 28th, the federal government issued a clawback of SFR funds, which reversed funding extensions that had been previously granted to states and towns. When I got the notification, I immediately got in touch with Ms. Borges to make sure that all of our money had in fact been spent down. So Ms. Manchini, thank you for, on behalf of all of us in Stratford, for being so completely on top of that, because over, almost two dozen school districts did lose money in the clawback. The state also lost about seven million dollars of funding in the clawback. On the date of our State Board of Education meeting, the commissioner reported that, the meeting ended was on Wednesday. She was, had been scheduled for a meeting with the US Department on Monday, but that had been canceled. And so subsequently, another meeting has been requested, and since then, Connecticut has followed the process for going through another waiver request. And so that's now pending with the federal government. I also had the opportunity to attend a NASB meeting. NASB is the National Association of State Boards of Education, in which all of us from across the country were able to sort of react in real time to what was going on in our state. So it was really interesting to find out that although our first take on this Connecticut State Board was how detrimental this was, Connecticut is in better shape than most other states who had their monies clawed back. So that's still a sobering issue that's out there to take care of. And then the day after our State Board of Education meeting on April 3rd, the Department of Education issued their request for state education agencies to certify that they're in compliance with Title VI and to collect certification responses along the same veins for school districts. On the 15th, you probably saw in the news, the governor held a press conference stating that Connecticut would not reply with that request. The commissioner has since sent a letter to the Department of Education stating that, among other things, the US Department of Education had already accepted Connecticut's set of assurances regarding Title VI compliance back when it was required as part of the Consolidated State Plan for every student succeeds. And so we've continued receiving federal funding for that. Therefore, there should be no other need for us to certify our compliance with Title IX. And she further stated to the US Department of Education that "we in the state are unaware of any federal or state statutes prohibiting diversity, equity, or inclusion," and that the CSDE is unaware of any current legal authority that the US Department has to obtain that certification from local school districts. Separately from that, the NEA filed a lawsuit seeking to block the enforcement of that request, and last Thursday, they won an injunction in federal court. So this injunction applies specifically to NEA districts, of which we are one. CEA is the state affiliate of NEA. So should anything, you see or hear anything in the news media in relation to the signings of the letters and any retaliatory effects that take place while that court order stands, the districts in Connecticut that are NEA districts will have no impact while this plays out in the courts. In addition to that, at our State Board of Education meeting, we slightly discussed the Connecticut School Discipline Collaborative's report. They legislatively have to report to the General Assembly on school discipline practices. I'm happy to share the full report with you. It's about two dozen pages, but the major highlights were the four recommendations from the collaborative. The first one is related to continuing community partnerships for mental health and diversion programs, specifically highlighting the need to replicate appropriate and scalable interventions throughout the state for differently situated districts, meaning urban, rural, large, small, all of the different types of districts that we have here in the state. The second recommendation is related to MTSS support, and that was to provide statewide integration of MTSS interventions. The proposal also recommended that the statewide system should consist of restorative practices, evidence-based mental health supports and SEL, community and family engagement partnerships, student voice, and staff professional learning. The third recommendation from the collaborative is related to in-school, in-school suspension guides. They recommended that the department revise the in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension guidance in order to provide best practices for school districts. And then the fourth recommendation was about student voice and the need to ensure that student voice is a part of policy development and implementation. And as I mentioned last month, I'll be joining that collaborative from this point forward in my role on the Board of Ed. Otherwise, legislatively, you may be aware that the very large special education bill dropped right before the Easter holiday, and the public hearing on that was the Monday after. So there is very little turnaround time for the public to engage in comment. Coincidentally, the commissioner herself was not able to attend the public hearing, so she submitted written testimony. The bill to pay attention to, they're the exact same bill, one's in the House, it's House Bill 7277, and Senate Bill 1561. They are literally the same bill just introduced in both parts of the legislature. Again, the public hearing was on the 21st. There was significant lobbying from outplacement providers against a lot of the provisions of the bill. The commissioner, in her written report to the committee, stressed support for many of the parts that were in the bill, but also emphasized the fact that there were many parts of the bill that were, perhaps need a little more work and understanding, because some of them seem to fly afoul of FERPA, also potential IDEA violations by what's written, and many of the things are not funded in the governor's budget. So that's, you know, another unfunded mandate kind of thing. So she did request further conversations between the department and the committee about reconciling that bill. And then finally, as I mentioned before, I now attend NASB meetings, and on Thursday, I attended a federal briefing on Congress, the White House, and the Department of Education. They spoke with concern about the reconciliation process for the federal physical year 26 budget. In fact, what they said was that markups could probably start this week and leading into next week, and that the House Education and Workforce Committees are expected to try to come up with three hundred thirty billion dollars in cuts to to come up with $330 billion in cuts to programs in its portfolio through reconciliation. And then also, two other committees, just to pay attention to, that you might not think would hit in K-12 schools, but the House Agriculture Committee is allegedly considering cuts to nutrition assistance programs, and the House Energy and Commerce Committee is considering cuts to Medicaid, which would obviously impact reimbursement rates for school districts. So in addition to what's going on with Education and Workforce, I would suggest keeping apprised of what's going on with those two committees. And with that, my next State Board of Education meeting is on Wednesday, May 7th, and I anticipate a very long agenda, based on what I've just shared with you, because there's a lot of open-ended questions about a lot of things, many moving pieces, and there's lots of questions, and the Commissioner hopefully will have more information for us at that point. So thank you very much for the opportunity. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and if you'd like copies of any of the larger reports, I have access to, I'm happy to share them electronically with you.
Any questions for Ms. Ricker? So you said cuts in Medicaid, that was our state government that's going to be cutting?
Federal government.
Federal government, okay.
Federal government.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks for your work. So we have a couple presentations, and the first would be the Stratford High School Math Champions.
Thank you very much for having us here today. I am Daniel Fernandez, a senior here at Stratford High School, and I've been on the Stratford Math Team for four years. And we went and competed at the Southern Math Competition, which is where a bunch of schools from around Connecticut go to Southern College, and they present to us a bunch of college-level theoretical math competitions, and the aim of the game is to finish as many as you can in like about an hour and a half. And we were good enough to be able to win first place. Thanks for it. It's to my classmate here, Gonzaga Ancetta, who solved the ending problem, which got us those five points to beat number two, which I think was Ridgefield? I don't know, one of those high schools up there. And we have a couple problems here for you guys to try today, and if you'd like to, you know, take a crack at it. Any of you also, you're welcome to paper. Ms. Q's been at it, so she's had some extra time.
Good evening. I want to say thank you for inviting us here as well. My name is Joseph Holton. I am also a senior here at Stratford High School, competing on the math team for three years. And the problem I want to present to you today is the one that I worked on at the competition, actually. And something unique about this problem is, based on what they said, that at the end of the competition, we were the only team there that was able to solve this one, which also helped us, you know, play some pretty well. In the interest of time, we're going to give you guys five minutes about to solve this. So no pressure. Like I said, if anyone else in the audience would like to give it a shot, I can pass out, I have a couple papers. Yeah, I'll pass them on now.
Can we phone a friend?
Yeah.
I think this one took an hour and a half for us to do. So the instructions are on the back.
The tomb. Alex is so thankful for your help in freeing him from the Sphinx. In all the years he was trapped in the Sphinx, he discovered the location of a hidden tomb full of treasures. You enter the tomb, the darkness making it impossible to see. You come to a stone vault with four shapes carved into it. Under each shape, there are six numbers. Alex tells you that each shape can be divided into identical but smaller versions of itself. The numbers suggest how many smaller shapes you need, and some of those numbers will work while others will not. Determine which numbers will work for each shape, and then feel along those numbers to open the vault.
I would like to add that this is a part of the story, so some of the context is a little bit off, including the feel part. There's another reference guide for Braille Code, which is what your answer will give you. But the gist, to put it into English more, the gist is you need to find the correct answers of how many identical but smaller versions of that shape you can fit inside of itself. And you can also consider options that go smaller than the provided grid. I think that's about all.
Is this multiple choice?
So how about, how about we be extra nice to our Board of Ed, and we let them take this home? And if any one of them can solve it, then Mr. Del Piano, I would like to buy pizza for your math team. If one board member can figure it out.
Well, I'm a part of the math team too.
Not you.
One of us can figure it out. Mr. Del Piano, if one of us can figure it out, I will personally buy you lunch.
But I think they're going to need overnight, because five minutes is not.
That's not, you're not a very able.
Right. Do you guys have a second problem for them?
No, no, we're going for second.
Okay, so that's a good one, I think one is a good place to start.
We did have a second problem, but this one I personally worked on, and it's a lot more mathematical than me and my classmate Nick worked on it for like probably an hour and forty-five minutes, two hours, and got it. If I tried to work on it today again, it'd probably take me the rest of the week to figure it out, so. We scrapped that idea in the sake of keeping time.
How does it make you feel after working on a problem for an hour and a half or two hours and solving it?
I mean, it kind of feels like you're hitting your head against a brick wall for a while, to put it bluntly, but, you know, once you solve it, you know, it's like, it's a wonderful feeling, it's like euphoria, like wow, makes you feel a little smart.
I think you guys are more than a little smart. That's amazing. Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you so much.
Erica is not back yet, so they're not.
I was just going to say, when I saw that other thing, I'm like, I still have a child in Florida.
Yes, not yet, when they get back, they're still in Florida.
Where are they? Oh.
Because in Florida right now.
Okay, so we will push that to next month's meeting, and then, so next on the agenda, a residency update?
Before I start speaking about residency, I just want to highlight a couple of things that I've been doing, working along with the police department and fire department to keep our schools safe. Last fall, the, through Western Connecticut State University, all the administrators from every school went to three workshops, started last October, and we continue this March and February, March, anything that had to do with school safety prevention. And it was successful that one of our principals would probably go for training, so we could train all of our administrators in-house. Continue to work with, to receive more cameras for our schools for safety. I was just notified by the police department that they're in cooperation with the bus company, they want to bring the cameras for speeders for cars that do not stop, or the school buses when the children are, or if the buses are dropping them off. Had some issues that I worked on with Sonitrol, where we do, we constantly do fire drills, lockdown drills. So we had some issues, I believe the last meeting I spoke with on front of the board, it was a call center that is not located in Stratford or in Connecticut, when they were trying to call dispatch to alert them that a panic button was pressed or any emergency at the schools. It was not being answered properly, because whether calling from out of state or out of Stratford, you can't dial 911. So the call was coming in just as a regular call to dispatch, where they were concerned with 911 emergency calls. So now, along with Larry Chikarelli, we developed, we know the number that the alarm companies call, when we call for lockdown, all the dispatchers were trained, so they know that during the day, any time that that number comes in, it's treated as a 911, and all the dispatchers are aware of it, which is critical. Some, sometimes, we were doing this training, the drills, it was taking four or five minutes before that officer that was standing next to me was being told ass by the dispatch center that there was a problem at the school. So we continue to monitor that every time. I make sure that we continue to test all the panic buttons and the time that it takes for the dispatchers to get a hold of us, to ask, is there a drill or is something really happening at the schools? I also worked in labeling all the doors at every school, inside and outside, for emergency reasons, and came up with an idea of labeling with a specific, which I'm not going to discuss here, for officers and firefighters to know which doors, if they all have fobs, they could get in our buildings. But in case of emergency, they don't know which door they can come in with their fob. So now, all they have to do is look for this specific marking at the doors, and know that they can come in through those doors. So less time for them to figure out how to get in and give some help to other schools. I also make sure that if, as an example, a panic button goes off here at Stratford High, the administrators get a text, along with the superintendent and assistant superintendent and all the assistant principals, so they know that someone pulled a panic button at the schools. Going to the security climate specialists, finally, this year, I was able to hire all of the climate specialists that we needed. It was a challenge, because when I first started at this job, the pay was not that great, so in working with Pam and now with Heather, it has come up, and now we're fully staffed when it comes for the security at the schools, the climate specialists. And one of the, I believe it was done before I was here, again, in cooperation with Larry Chikarelli, I've been going to all the schools and playing scenarios with administrators, what would happen if this happened at the school, what if this type of emergencies? And along, we have brought in the supervisor for the dispatch of the police department, the call center, and basically going over how to report an incident at the school, what's more important for the dispatchers to know, so we can get, they can get the right help at the schools quicker. So that's what I put up in about thirty minutes, or I wanted to update you on some of those things. And if anybody has any questions about what I just said?
I think it's important for the board to know that Carlos does a lot of work behind the scenes, so he is constantly working with our building administrators, and he was instrumental in making sure that we finally got all of our building administrators trained for safety. He also makes sure that all of our blue lights are working, all of the alarms are working, that we are locking the doors and going out the appropriate way for recess, despite people wanting to take shortcuts. You know, he really has been instrumental in responding and answering to any of the needs of the building as they work through safety concerns, so we've been really thankful for the work that's been done this year, because it has been a lot. We are really excited that we finally have all of our climate specialists and positions built.
Thank you.
Now you can move on to residency. The other part.
We have a question.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chicharito. You mentioned the 911 dispatch was taking four to five minutes to ask. Do you know about how long it's taking now?
Yes, Sonitrol's currently, the call center, the company that they're used to answer those calls, is in Ohio. They are ending the contract with that company, because they're having a lot of problems. So as of July 1st, it's going to be a different company out of New Jersey. Right now, it takes about a minute, which is still too long. My goal is to get that done anywhere between 20 to 30 seconds. And I just looked at my notes, one other item I forgot. When I came on board, one of the, it was an incident on one of the schools where a child went out, and nobody knew where this child was, and the child was outside, just outside the school, wasn't having a good day, just sat outside. So I started looking at our, what we call the daytime alarm system, just like your house, when you have your alarm on, but it's not on for overnight, it's just saying, when the door opens, you hear this chime or whatever you had. So all the schools had that already in place, it was just not being used. So I made sure that, I'm not going to talk about times or any particulars, but the schools do turn on those alarms, so any time anyone walks in or walks out of the school, certain people are notified of this. So you can look at the cameras, you can try to find out what happened, who came in, who went out. So that was another important thing that I was working on. Like anything else, that's why we do all the drills, because it could be working today and not working tomorrow. Onto the residency, which is where I spend the majority of my time. This year, we had a total of 38 cases. And, I gave the wrong, I think I gave my sheet. So dis-rolling for this year, we have a total of twelve, twelve dis-rolling ones. I had three pending, I had three closed, closed meetings, a residency was sent to me, and it was quickly determined that it wasn't a residency issue. And confirmed, the confirmed numbers are residencies that were turned in, I investigated. It takes, it takes just as much time for me to do all my background and all that, but I confirm, many people are under house enlistment, people are in town, and we have purchased software, which allows me to, my investigation is more accurate, I have a lot of things in the background in the computer from this company that we pay a service for. I can tell a lot of information as to where people live, and many of the things that I'm not going to, again, talk in public. So that's where the confirm is, it was reported they might not live in town, but it turns out that they do live in town, and I confirmed that. The cases that I work, that they take, I have to do at least four visits for surveillances, and you think it might be easy just to go four days in a row, they can't be in a row, sometimes the students are out, and I have to break it up. And it could be, I could be out there at 6:30 in the morning for high schools, and I could do two cases in one day if I'm working in a high school, elementary, or middle school, all depends. So if you have any questions on that. Also, from last year, carryover, there were six cases that were carryover, two were confirmed, two were closed, and two were dis-rolling.
Because we work with a hearing officer. Carlos has to really be thorough and things have to be spread over time, right? So if he's doing, you know, if he's in the middle of seven investigations, he'll tackle a couple of those in one week and a couple the next week, take a week off and do that. Because when you present your case, it can't be that he went and saw somebody Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday and they were all at that place for four days in a row because anyone can be someone before his friend, right? So he really has to strategically spread those out. He's really done a very nice job of presenting that report to me, who then sits in the hearings and he comes and presents, you know, what is going on within those hearings because everyone is entitled to that process.
And what's the difference between closed and confirmed?
Closed is a case that was sent to me and I immediately knew that this was not for me to look at. So confirm is, like I said, if they send me up, the child said or a neighbor said they don't live in town, they don't live at that address.
And Carlos confirmed they actually do live in Stratford.
I confirmed that they actually are town residents.
Okay.
So when I do this, when we send the letter out telling the family that they do not, we believe that they don't reside in town, at that point, they have ten days to ask for a hearing. And we have ten days to set up that hearing. Once that hearing takes place, the hearing officer has ten days to make his decision. Once that officer makes that decision, that family has twenty days to appeal to the state. Once it goes to the state, the state, I believe, has forty-five days to set a hearing. And I forget how many days they have after the hearing. This year, we had not had any cases that went up to the state.
We handled everything.
Everything was on, where there was no questions.
Lot of work.
Wanky process.
It is.
Yes.
It's good to see how proactive you are with not only the residency, non-residency, with the safety. You're just ensuring and improving our safety protocols to ensure all our students and staff are safe. So it's good, it's good to see that you're on top of it.
But in my spare time also, I go to whatever school I'm needed for some positive questions. An incident with a parent, there's today, there was incident that happened yesterday with something else students. So I had to go to the police department, spend about four hours there trying to figure out.
Carlos really is my link to anything that happens over a weekend. He will be at the police department first thing in the morning to make sure that I have the details I need in order to make sure all of our students are safe. And if there's anything we have to, you know, like I will say to him, is there anything I need to do at the school right now in order to make sure whatever happened this weekend is not impacting against the day? So he's been really valuable. I will tell you, if the state had their way, he would have to do twelve visits to families. We, we've, you know, gotten it up to four, which is a lot to be able to, to work with.
All right, so any other questions? Any other questions?
I just wondered, do you ever get referrals from bus drivers or Uber drivers who are suspicious? Have I heard stories of students getting dropped off on a spot and getting picked up by a car?
A lot of those stories, a lot of reports that come my way with drivers and things are not, they don't turn out to be anything like that. People believe, like, at the end of the day, a bus could drop off a kid in front of their house and a car could be waiting there. Then how do you know they're not going shopping? How do you know they're not, you know, their mom has a part-time job as she goes to take the kid to an aunt's house? It's, I, most of my job in surveillance is not at a particular time. And it's not the end of the day because I don't want to talk about it anymore as to what I do. But it's every, I have a line, anonymous line when people call and the messages. Look, I listen to those messages. Sometimes they come email directed to me and I look at every case.
He looks at every single case that comes up, no matter who reports it?
I had to give you an idea of what another thing that I do in Power School. I could check an address and see how many kids are registered at that address. So I was given a case and I looked at that case that I was given by this particular school. But when I looked at this case, that family's there. But then I discovered that there was another family there prior to that family that was still in our system. So they became my investigation, not the one the school took. So I don't, just because it's not the one the school took, then it's not, doesn't mean I'm not going to look at it. I'm going to follow that.
Anything else? Thank you for the update. We'll go over to the superintendent's executive report.
Do you want to do the update on?
Oh, the construction project, closed, yep. Mr. Ruggiero. Good evening. So I had just, I had asked Mr. Ruggiero to come. We had been given a list and I've talked about it before. There were twenty, twenty projects?
Yeah.
Open-ended projects and for various number of reasons, they had been closed out. There's a process that goes along with it. But just was hoping you could come and enlighten us on where some of these projects are, what's being closed out and completed and what?
So we'll take Chapel Roof and Solar and the Second Hill Lane Roof and Solar. We actually just got the information to move forward tonight for the Second Hill Lane Roof. You can actually put forward a motion to approve. We just got the information today at, I don't know, maybe three o'clock. I don't have Chapel's information to move forward today, but probably tomorrow. And then you guys have a meeting on Wednesday. So if Teresa can get it entered tomorrow, you guys will be able to have a motion to approve Chapel Roof Solar project. There's still a lot of stuff that's still in audit with the state, a lot of projects. But we also have, you know, a bunch that are completed and paid. We have one, two, three, four, five right now that are approved and paid for. But most of them are still in audit with the state and with the state it could take a while. Still some information we need to get from the town. Susan's been kind of going back and forth with Dawn, with the town. So they got us two today. And it's just a process of getting all the right information sent to the state, otherwise things get held up.
When we get the information, you guys have the vote. And that's when Susan can finish closing and we can get the funding. So we are getting more this year than we have and I think the, you know, collaboration is working out better.
And I know everybody wanted a copy and Teresa will actually send a copy. But just know that this stuff changes daily. So what, what, next month, we could end up having everything on here. Two or three, excuse me, projects that are actually, you know, approved to be closed out or they are closed out.
Original sent to all electronic.
Yeah.
Okay, just remember.
So I think, yeah, we'll just need to keep updating and sending you guys as we update this spreadsheet. It's only going to be an ongoing project.
And do we know anything about the Worcester Kitchen floor? Have we gotten any updates? It's unsure as this was from twenty thirteen.
No, but I do know that the town has been having some of their, two of their guys go there and take up sections of the floor and redo them. They're holding quite well. But again, I had put in monies in the capital to have that floor redone. The town did ask how much it was for. But I don't know where we stand with that yet for that.
So, so most of these projects are either completed or on the way to be completed?
On the way to be completed. A good portion of them are all in process for closure, but they're just in audit right now.
Okay. And we received, I think last month, I think, four letters from the state?
Three or four.
Do you know which?
Correct.
Which ones of those were? Am I being listed in this?
They are, they're listed in here.
In the documents that you'll look at.
Correct. So like Benell Roof, it's in audit right now with the state. It's in process. Johnson Roof, again, it's in audit with the state. Nichols Roof, audit with the state. As they give us the okay, they have to come out. We're actually waiting for, we're actually waiting for the state to come out to visit our honey spot so they can move forward with approval there. So to get closure. Again, like I say, as we get it, we enter it immediately. We don't wait around. We try to get them in as quick as possible. So we have right now waiting for the town. We have Worcester's Roof and Solar. Benell's Worcester, I believe Worcester, Benell's Solar and Roof. Wilcox and Festivale and Johnson Abatement. Benell Abatement and flooring, that's all stuff that's in audit right now. So as those come in, they'll start clearing out, you know, fairly quick. It won't be, yeah, we'll get our reimbursement back.
When you get the form, what you want to look at is the final column that has the notes in it. That'll tell you where it's at. So where's, what Susan used did on that spreadsheet is she made sure that on the last column, she just notes the stage and the steps that each one is at and that's what you'll see updated as well.
And then on the end, you have three items, the Flood HVAC, Wilcox and HVAC and Chapel HVAC? Are those?
Right, so the Flood, we had a grant for five hundred and change to replace the chillers, which are done, completed. And they should be firing the system up to make sure everything is running by Friday this week. And then at that, we can then move forward with getting that approved to go, you know, for the state.
And those are because of the, we're just waiting for warmer weather?
Well, actually, we're waiting for them to complete the job.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they turn around and said, but, you know, Flood is, is, is the school that we need both heat and air conditioning in order to keep the temperature in there without having water coming down the walls from humidity. So they could fire that up at any time. But I was told that it's this Friday that they're shooting for to have that done.
And is that the same with Wilcox and Chapel?
Well, Wilcox and HVAC, we did put a new system in there over the cafeteria. So that's one. And the Chapel, I'm not quite sure of the Chapel one because I have to, I got to find out about the Chapel only because we didn't really do any big HVAC work there. And I'll get back to you on that. Actually, we'll make a note on that when I said, when we said, yeah, update a copy.
Any questions or?
We don't have material on that. Most likely it is more, they'll email the material and then the next meeting you guys have a question you can ask. We don't have that.
You're the only one with a copy.
But we have, but we do have this, the motion.
Correct.
We can either do this tonight or do it at the special meeting. Is it something that they wanted us to do tonight or?
Susan was hoping that you'd do it tonight.
Okay. All right. So this is, and so give us a little update on the Second Hill Lane. Mrs., the motion would be for the Second Hill Lane Elementary School?
Correct, for the roof, the new roof and the solar.
Roof and solar. It's completed now?
Yeah, like I said, we got the, we got all the information we needed to move forward on our end from the town today. Only for Second Hill Lane, I don't have Chapels, which could be tomorrow.
We'll do it at our next.
Correct.
But we can do Second Hill Lane. But it's all been completed, you spoke to the town. They have all the paperwork they need. It's pretty much just a formality for us to accept it.
When you get the motion, it means we're ready to go.
Okay, okay. So I would like to get a motion to waive the rules and add the Second Hill Lane Elementary School filing a form for project one three eight oh one oh nine RR PV added to the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Bedal, second by Ms. O'Brien, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passed unanimously. So the Board of Ed, it's been added to the agenda then. The Board of Ed approves the following. File, filing a form SCG oh four nine F, final grant application for the roof replacement and so, solar photovoltaic project at Second Hill Lane Elementary School, project number one three eight oh one oh nine RR PV with the Department of Administrative Services, the DAS, Office of Schools Construction, and adopting the following resolution, accepting the project as complete. Be it resolved that the Stratford Board of Ed accepts the Second Hill Lane Elementary School State Project Number one three eight oh one oh nine RR PV as complete. Moved by Mr. O'Brien, second by Ms. Bedal, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously. Thank you. So I guess we can let them know, we'll get that, if you get, as soon as you have the information, just.
Yeah, we could do just.
Push it today, but it'd be nice if we just have a moment to review it and formulate any questions we might have.
Okay.
All right, I think that was it. If anybody had any other questions, but, so you'll update us on that, we'll keep us comprised.
Absolutely.
And, yeah, I'll go from there. All right, well, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks for taking the time. So before we get into the superintendent's executive report, I see Ms. Sheik is here. I don't know if you would like to give a report if you're just here to listen.
Good evening. Representative Joe Cresco would have liked to be here, but he was stuck in leadership. We had session today. So fortunately, we got out a little early, so I apologize for being late. I had WPCA before here. So we're more than halfway through the legislative session. There are over three thousand bills that have been submitted. So right now in the process for the legislature, there are bills that are going through, for the most part, the second to last step where if some of them have to go to appropriations, then they go there because there's therefore a fiscal note attached to sent bills. But I wanted to bring to your attention, and I think Mr. Chairman reminded me if I'm wrong, but I think everybody gets my weekly email blasts that go out. So I just wanted to be able to communicate through the microphone to all of you and whoever else is listening out there in YouTube, that's the channel. And here in the audience also for a lot of our parents. I've gotten several emails of parents who have children with special education needs services regarding legislation that recently was moving through. So if you'd allow me, I just want to read, this is a brief synopsis. The two new, the new bill that is now moving and is still in the process is sixty-three pages long. So that's a lot for anyone to try and sift through and understand. And the special education, it, we have a select, the legislature has a select committee this year to deal with our special education needs, financing, services. And they did a listening tour all across the state. The one closest to us here in Stratford was at Usatana Community College. So I just wanted to give you that brief update just in case anyone hadn't actually read it. So this year, the Select Committee on Special Education has introduced two transformative proposals. It's House Bill seven two seven seven and Senate Bill fifteen sixty-one to better support children with special needs, their families and the educators who work so hard on their behalf. Special education is a fundamental human right. Every child deserves the opportunity to learn, grow and thrive in an environment that meets their unique needs. These bills take meaningful steps towards ensuring that right is protected and strengthened across Connecticut. To be clear, this bill does not abolish or eliminate private placements. It introduces fiscal oversight for how public dollars are spent in special education. Right now, our system is under enormous strain. We're seeing a significant increase in outplacement costs, which districts often continue to be charged and pay. This has caused the excess cost asks to increase while the number of outplaced students has remained roughly the same. Some districts spend millions to place kids in private programs and some families are being left behind, struggling with the long wait lists and unaffordable costs when out-of-district options are their only choice. House Bill seven two seven seven and Senate. House Bill seven two seven seven and Senate Bill fifteen sixty-one aim to change that by focusing on building the capacity of local districts to offer high-quality in-district special education services, giving students the support that they need closer to home. They would help standardize tuition rates across the state while making services more accessible and then therefore sustainable. The Select Committee undertook a statewide listening tour to hear from parents, teachers, school administrators, advocates, and students, and their feedback has been crucial in shaping these bills. And the committee remains committed to a fair, transparent process that prioritizes the voices of those most affected. The goal is to build a special education system that is equitable, effective, and centered on what's best for our children and our families. And at the end of that, which went out in the email blast, was a note that these bills are still a work in progress, as they are, as the Select Committee continues to work in meetings and public hearings, which was last week, to finalize the best way to support special education programs across the state. So I had gotten a slew of emails from parents, and I don't know the source of what the group was or if it was like an automated email of parents who were very concerned, very afraid. So I had seen Ms. Borges earlier this evening. I was able to get over to here, to Stratford High, to see the career services fair that we had. And I spoke to Representative Kahn, who is on the Select Committee, and they've been in communication and are aware of, you know, our needs here in Stratford. But there's a very cognizant and inclusive effort to try and address these issues. So that moving in is, we all know with the economic situ, you know, umbrella cloud, however you want to describe it, about challenging, being transparent with all of you, this budget season is going to be. But within what has happened, I don't have the dollar amount yet, but there is hope tangible that. At least we're fully funded, as we, I think we had a conversation last time about when the state says you're going to get X amount of dollars and then how much it is. So when we have that information or when Ms. Borges has that information, I'm sure she'll share that with you. And then therefore, if I get it first, then I'll send it once, once it's official, because we don't want to send something and then have it rescinded. And then that puts you guys in a, in a position of trying to figure out, well, how are we going to fund X, Y, and Z? So those are the main things that I would like to share with you. If any of you, I know we've missed each other the last two months, I think it is. If you have any questions for me, I appreciated the update with the status on what's happening in the process. It helps us as your state representatives, if we know what the process is of the checkpoint for said amount of projects and the reimbursements. So trying to get that money to come back to Stratford. And then we can go to said personnel in case for whatever reason. Sometimes things get a little bit slower because we know how significant and important that money is for us here. Any questions?
No, but thank you. You did a really nice job explaining. I know you're not on the education.
I am not.
But I appreciate that. And it really truly is a complicated bill that, from the superintendent's perspective and honestly, from the special education director perspective, we were hoping it wasn't going to all go in one place, right? It's a lot in one bill and change is really difficult. And I understand where our families and parents would come from with a fear that their outside placement would close. That's not the intention, right? But nobody wants less money. So oftentimes places will say, if I don't get this money, I will have to close, right? The regulation, I think if the bill is able to pass, will come with a committee that's saying, it's not saying, hey, standard rate. Everybody's going to charge the same thing. It's about what services you provide and some oversight for that. I mean, we, the burden of proof falls on us. And when we have students that end up in an outplacement, there's oftentimes outplacements that I truly just don't believe in. They, they're tout themselves even in their title that they are a speech school, yet they have no certified speech providers. That's a problem, right? So that's what we're asking this bill to do. And it is going to have pushback because change is difficult, but oversight is necessary. And if we don't start partnering and working together, then we're not necessarily giving our kids their least restrictive environment in the best place they can be. So we have to be able to partner and do that. So I'm torn, similar to the commissioner, where, you know, there's pieces of that bill that I think we weren't quite ready to put in, but we put it all in one bucket that probably need to be revisited. But there's large portions of that bill that public school really needs to go, we do need it to go through. So I will keep you posted. I try to tell you every Friday what I hear for updates and where we're at with it. But I think in general, you have to remember there are some really good things that need to happen in order for us to service our kids and hold the places that are servicing our kids accountable.
Any questions? And I think too, the more, the more we hear of it, the more different, different angles that we see it from, it's helpful for us to understand it as well. But hopefully we can, you know, find some of that accountability.
It's a hundred and sixty-three pages.
Somewhere in that sixty-seven pages, they, they address some of the accountability that we're looking for. I think that's crucial to ensure that our students actually get what they, they need, so.
I think your update did a great job.
Thank you.
And I do appreciate you taking the time to come over.
Thank you. Any thought? Just give us a forty-eight hour heads up. From now through the first week of June, we'll be in session most likely three to four days a week. So whatever we know, like I said, I'm happy to, to share. And if anybody has questions, you can email me, Joe, or however you see fit to communicate that. I would make one request though. The list that Rich was referencing is that Google Doc or however that's organized. I would love to see it. I'm also on building needs, but that's a different hat as town council. But for the state, if, perhaps to the delegation that way. If it's a live doc, you know, we won't edit it. We won't touch it, I promise. Just don't give us the rights. But just to see it, so then that way it's like, check one last thing. Because every single town is, with their representatives, is trying as hard as they can to try and bring back as much funding and resources that each town Board of Ed district needs. So the more information I have, the stronger my argument is, but I'm trying to advocate for us, so it's appreciated.
Sure, Rich will appreciate that. Found as well.
Thank you. Awesome.
And you guys have Ms. Shake's email address?
It works then.
Yeah, it's Caitlin dot shake at CGA dot C T dot gov.
All right. So we will jump back to the superintendent's executive report.
Thank you. So I'm first going to start by expressing my gratitude for the CTE programs and the incredible dedication the staff, the teachers, and everyone put into tonight. As I was walking around tonight, everywhere I looked, I saw the portrait of a graduate. I saw it come to life through the students' work and their achievements and what they have put together. So I wanted to start with just a gratitude for coming together as one unit, not having these at multiple different separate locations, but all coming together to shine in one location for all of Stratford. It was fantastic. I really appreciate it. But in light of the many building accomplishments that we have to celebrate, I'm going to forego the remainder of my executive report, and I'm going to ask Dr. Piazza to come up early because he has a lot of information for you guys tonight. So I'm going to give him my time plus his.
Thank you. As Ms. Borges was saying, you know, this, I'm going to try to keep up with Zoe and Jenna here. I always say it's, it's a great part of the meeting, just to hear all the great things that are going on at, at the high school level. And I know, you know, as we've seen throughout the year, all of us throughout the district are not afraid to address and work on the various areas to continue to improve Stratford Public Schools. But it is nice to stop and celebrate some of the great things happening across the district. And this is the time of year that we get to do all that. So Dr. DiOrio and I did put together some of the things that are going on in our district that we just thought the board and the public should hear about. We'll start at the elementary level, some great celebrations and highlights at Eli Whitney. We want to congratulate them. Their student council was named an ASCA Student Council of Excellence. It was one of only forty-seven councils recognized nationwide and the only one from Connecticut. So congratulations to Eli Whitney. At Franklin Elementary, they have hosted two successful family engagement workshops, Parenting with Purpose, Guiding with Greatness. That brought families together for a bilingual interactive evening focusing on routines, positive discipline, and family connection, featuring restorative conversations and student-led celebrations. Another workshop was Parent and Student Journey to Middle School. This was led by Counselor Tish Morrissey, preparing sixth grade families for the academic and social transition to middle school, covering things like GPA, power school, and self-advocacy. So two great workshops at Franklin. Johnson House held an assembly to present a thousand dollar donation to the Stars Animal Rescue, which was raised by families and staff. The school also convened its ATP Committee, that's the Action Team for Partnerships, to plan school-community partnerships and hosted a successful spring dance. Over at Nichols, they celebrated Kindness and Culture Month with a whole school read of the Jelly Dough, the Jelly Donut Difference. This was funded by Best Mini Grant. Students enjoyed a donut treat, and families shared their favorite cultural desserts that are now showcased on a community bulletin board. Second Hill Lane partnered with Benell High School for two great events. Benell students volunteers organized a post Easter egg hunt for Second Hill Lane's K one students, which is a fun tradition that's now in its fourth year. In the Bulldogs and Training Program, Second Hill Lane students faced off against their Benell mentors in a friendly kickball game, followed by motivational conversations about finishing the school year strong and preparing for testing. And at Wilcoxen Elementary School, they just completed their first week of a two-week gratitude campaign called Look for the Good. Components of this campaign include building a gratitude wall filled with sticky notes where students and staff write about people or things that they're grateful for. Students and staff are given opportunities to stop and reflect about who or what they are grateful for on gratitude spots that are placed on the floor throughout the school as well. This coming week, students and staff can share kindness cards with each other. And as a culminating activity, students will write You Matter letters to people in their lives explaining why that person is important to them. So some great things going on at the elementary level. We'll skip over middle school for now, just to point out, I do want to share a little bit of data. We'll definitely get more into this at our next data presentation at the beginning of next year. But we are pleased to report significant gains in our SAT school day performance at both Stratford High School and Benell High School. These results reflect the dedication of our students, our staff, our leadership teams in continuing to advance academic excellence and equity. Just to share a few figures with you, at Stratford High, in the evidence-based reading and writing, the average score increased from four fifty-four to four eighty-two. That's a six percent jump, which is the highest in the last six years. Benchmark attainment, so students who attained their benchmark, rose from, from forty-one percent to fifty-one percent. All demographic, demographic subgroups improved with especially strong growth among Hispanic and Black students. And seventy-four percent of students demonstrated growth from their PSAT to their SAT. In math at Stratford High, the average score grew fifteen points from four twenty-eight to four forty-three. Benchmark attainment, although still not where we want it to be, did raise from eleven percent to fifteen percent. So we're going in the right direction. White and Hispanic students showed gains. Targeted supports are being implemented to address a slight decline among Black students. So we'll continue to look at the demographic, demographic breakdown of the data. Over at Benell, for the evidence-based reading and writing, the benchmark attainment rose from forty-two percent to forty-eight percent. The mean score improved from four forty-nine to four sixty-eight, so a nineteen-point jump there. And notable subgroup improvements, especially among Black and white students. In math, tracking the same students, average math scores improved, looking from their PSAT to their SAT, forty-three points from three eighty-nine to four thirty-two, so a nice jump. Comparing different classes from twenty twenty-five, I'm sorry, from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, the average math score increased from four twenty-six to four thirty-two, so a modest gain of six points. Again, still moving in the right direction. White students saw strong growth in benchmark attainment in mathematics. There are opportunities definitely to strengthen our support for our Hispanic and Black students. So again, we'll, we'll continue to look at the demographic breakdown and try to examine why those issues still persist. So again, we continue to build positive momentum in college and career readiness with clear gains in both literacy and math achievement. And again, we'll celebrate these successes while continuing to remain focused on equity and targeted interventions. Finally, to jump back, just a few events at our middle school is worth celebrating. Worcester Middle School recently hosted a really unforgettable day. I was able to, to be there for both of these, which were really outstanding. Days of literacy and creativity on Friday, our seventh and eighth grade Wildcats had the opportunity to engage with acclaimed author Tori Maldonado. The day began with an inspiring book talk where Mr. Maldonado captivated students with stories of perseverance, identity, and empowerment. His powerful messages resonated deeply with our students, sparking thoughtful conversations and a new excitement for reading and writing. The celebration of student voice continued in the evening with the First Annual Worcester Poetry Cafe, where our Wildcats took the stage to deliver heartfelt spoken word performances. Their creativity, courage, and authenticity made for an incredibly moving event that left a lasting impression on all who attended. Again, seeing the portrait of the graduate, the communication skills, you know, if we all remember back in middle school, how difficult it was to speak in front of people. It was so incredible to see them sharing, you know, really intimate thoughts about themselves through their poetry. It was a really great event. So we're proud of our Wildcats for embracing these opportunities with such passion. And special thanks to Principal Fonseca, Mr. Singletary, and Dr. Maxwell, and the many staff members who helped bring these memorable experiences to life. And then at Flood Middle School, they had a busy and exciting spring showcasing student learning and building community connections through two wonderful events. Back in, on April third, they hosted their gallery walk, welcoming families into the building to experience the incredible work of our students, projects, and work samples from every student area. And every, and every student were thoughtfully displayed, giving families a window into the creativity, critical thinking, and hard work that happens at Flood every day. It was a true celebration of student achievement and the vibrant learning environment that they cultivate. And then later this month, just last week, we welcomed the next generation of students during our Future Falcons orientation. Over two hundred and fifty students and families attended this fun and interactive evening. Participants engaged in scavenger hunt throughout the building, visiting classrooms, meeting teachers, and learning fun with facts along the way. The energy and excitement were palpable as our Future Falcons got a glimpse into the welcoming community and engaging experiences that await them at Flood. So again, that's just a glimpse into all the stuff, you know, a lot of great stuff happening. And we're incredibly proud of our students and staff for their outstanding work and really grateful for the families for their ongoing partnership. That's it. Thank you for the time.
Any questions?
It's very busy. I shared a document with all of you with all the potential activities you could pop into or see today. But they have been nonstop, the two of them, at event after event. And we do have a lot to celebrate and a lot of things that are really amazing here.
Thank you for that. So I guess we'll jump over to the Chief Operating Officer Report.
Good evening, everyone. In the absence of the Finance Committee meeting this evening, I just thought I would provide a brief financial overview for you. You were provided with monthly financial report for March. And once again, the most pressing issue continues to be the deficit in the special education budget. Currently, that budget is a total deficit of about three point six million dollars. We're projecting savings, as I've reported for months now, in both salaries and benefit accounts, along with some savings in our transportation supplies, fuel accounts. And that will help to offset the deficit at this point in time. Our estimated year-end balance for fiscal year twenty-five is looking to be around one point two to one point five million. And I share that range with you because we are continuously working to tighten all of the encumbrances to make sure none of our outplacement or our clinical costs. Purchase orders are over encumbered. Children move in and out. Sometimes we have our one-to-one nurses perhaps out for a few days and no, no one else to immediately cover them. So there's all types of savings that we need to adjust for. So we continuously look to do that. We want to get this number as tight as possible. Today, we actually had a meeting with Joanna, who's doing. Today, we actually had a meeting with Joanna, who's doing our grants, along with Heather, Susan Nicholson, and myself, to look at grants to see if there's some room in IDPA perhaps to offset some of the clinical costs, and we are hopeful that we're going to be able to do a little bit of that as well. So we are looking at every avenue possible to mitigate this deficit so that we won't have to ask for any more than necessary from the town. So as we are going to continue to carefully monitor the budget in all the areas, I also want to recognize all the potential savings in other areas, perhaps accounts that we may not utilize in full, though right now I am estimating that we will be. I am hoping to bring to you in May a formal recommendation to request funding from the town through the excess cost grant to cover the deficit, and that will allow us to continue paying our employees and not in any way, shape, or form overspending our appropriation with our June thirtieth year-end payrolls. So there's a lot of moving parts, a lot going on, but we will continue to keep this board apprised and aware of what we're doing and where we're heading. I will pause there, just in case you have any questions. And Heather, I don't know if you want to mention, or should we should talk about the Finance Committee meeting? I believe it's on March, I have more to say March, May for it.
I was going to make a suggestion, and you guys can think about it and then get back to us, but if you could hold that meeting off for a week or so, we'll have a more accurate number of the deficit, right? If you have it then, the numbers that Pam and I are able to give you are not going to be as tight as they would be if you put it off just a couple of weeks. We need to be able to do some adjustments to grants, and that just takes a little bit of time. So we would really appreciate it if we could have it a little bit later so we can give you a more accurate number at the Finance meeting.
I was going to say it would be better to do it right before our Board meeting.
Yeah, we'll move this to that meeting.
That would be great. That would really be helpful, and then.
So Tuesday after Memorial Day.
Then you'll know a little more heading into that meeting and then into the Board meeting on, you know, the appropriate request meeting right to the town.
Thank you. And the other two items I just wanted to mention are on your agenda this evening. So we have two budget transfers that we're asking you to approve. One is for the costs of the superintendent search through Cape, and the second is a transfer of available funds from technology accounts to be used to purchase Chromebooks. At this time, we are being told already that there are current, as well as further anticipated increases in this equipment, and we're concerned that with the budget dollars that we asked for in fiscal year twenty-six, we won't have the buying power to replace all of the Chromebooks that are scheduled to be replaced. So those are the two transfers. We can talk more about them if you'd like when we get to that part of the agenda. And lastly, the healthy food certification process is also on this evening's agenda. As you may recall, this is an annual approval that the Board is asked each year to abide by federal and state requirements, and according to the Connecticut General Statutes, each Board for all public schools participating in the National School Lunch Program must annually certify whether the district will follow the Connecticut nutrition standards for all foods sold to students separately from reimbursable meals. And as you will see from the agenda and all the motions, there are very specific wording to abide by those regulations, but it is important to note that districts that choose to participate in the healthy food certification do receive additional funding per lunch. So there definitely is an advantage to us participate. That's my report for the moment, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to address.
Any questions for Ms. Manjean? Okay. Moving on, I'll look for an acceptance of the, acceptance of the meeting minutes for the March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting, the April seventh, twenty-twenty-five special meeting, and the April twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five special meeting. By Mr. O'Brien, second by Ms. Padell. Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passionately. Both personnel assignments, resignations, et cetera, human, human resources, look for motion to approve the personnel report. Moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Ms. Padell. Any discussion?
Can I just make a comment? I just want to congratulate all of those listed as retirees. So many names that I know that are former colleagues of mine, who I had the pleasure of teaching with and/or who have had my children over the years, and I've had to experience them as a parent and the amazing educators that they are, so I congratulate you all in a very generous, enjoy.
Just to echo Lisa, there's actually a few of my elementary school teachers on that list, and I'm very excited for them and wish them all the best of luck.
We're looking forward to celebrating this.
I, I know they are.
And I think we have one of those gentlemen here in our audience.
I see a big smile there.
Thank you for all your years of service, Mr. Fierro, and I know there's, there's others here, but are we, we're doing a teacher appreciation, what is?
We're going to have a night in which we celebrate our students and our retirees and everything all together, so I can't remember the date because it's late.
Grace, do you remember? Okay. Well, that would be, yeah, so we were going to, we had just talked about maybe doing the Finance Committee meeting? I thought it was, but I wasn't sure. Can, can we do, did we put a time limit or? We can do it at maybe five and, how much time, I mean, the Finance Committee meeting, how much time you think you would need?
I don't think you need that much time, probably a half hour.
Why don't you guys chart it out? You know, the Board meeting, you know, obviously starts at seven fifteen, so just kind of back up, what, what kind of timeframe do you think you'll need and, and give yourself, you know, yeah, if we can get it started, you know, no earlier than five o'clock. But just, you know, we don't want to be all hanging out, so if we can just kind of, you know, be as accurate as possible. Okay, thank you. But yeah, great job, and thanks for your comments. Did we approve, did we vote on that?
No.
All right. There's a motion made, I think? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passionately. I will move to the budget transfer, budget transfer number one. Ms. Manjean, do you want to walk us, I know you gave us a little.
Yep, no, no problem. As I mentioned, a transfer of thirteen-thousand-eight-hundred dollars is necessary to cover the costs of the superintendent search conducted by the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. The funds for this transfer are available within the superintendent's salary line for fiscal year twenty-five.
So I'd look for a motion to approve, simple. By Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Ms. Padell. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passionately. Budget transfer number two.
Yes, this is a transfer of available funds from the technology accounts, object five ninety, in the amount of forty-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty dollars. It's due to unexpected savings from transitioning to a new registration platform, and these savings will be used to purchase Chromebooks, as noted in light of current and anticipated price increases. And in your packets, Director of Technology Matt Livers did provide you with a detailed overview of the request.
For motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Padell.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. O'Brien. Any discussion? Sure, sure the intent of this is, is to save money on here?
Absolutely, because more purchasing power as prices increase.
Prices are increasing, wanting to get ahead of it before they are increased more.
Any of the discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passionately. Vote number one, certification. You want to?
Can you read it?
I'll do it. You're doing it.
Certification pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section ten dash two-one-five-F, Stratford Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the school under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July one, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. This certification cell include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by school or non-school organizations and groups.
So then the motion would be to certify or approve as read?
I would say to certify, approve, yeah, certify and approve as read.
Okay, so I'd look for a motion to certify and approve as read.
So moved.
Ms. Padell.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Carol Fabian. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passionately. Number, vote number two.
Food exemptions. Stratford Board of Education will allow sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. And quote, "event" is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to thirty minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food sales.
And this would be a motion to, the same, it's the cert, it is the certified?
Certified.
Motion to certify and approve.
So moved.
Ms. Padell?
Second.
Angela Powers, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passionately. Vote number three.
Lastly, the beverage exemption. The Stratford Board of Education will allow the sale to students of beverages not listed in section ten dash two-two-one-Q of the Connecticut General Statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the beverages are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. The school day is the period from midnight before to thirty minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the beverage sales.
I look for motion to certify and approve.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Padell, seconded by Ms. O'Brien. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passionately. Thank you. And then we will move on to number four, requests for new course or major curriculum modification, Spanish for the native heritage speaker, one and two, Curriculum Committee with favorable recommendation. Somebody want to walk us through that?
So the, I'll do a little summary, but the outline of the request is in our agenda. So Donna Marino, Spanish teacher at Banel High School, presented these two courses. These courses would address the language development needs of our growing population of Spanish students by focusing on strengths and areas for improvement that are specific to students who have spoken and or written Spanish from early childhood. The course would also help meet the needs of the dual-language students who took Spanish at Cape to six and in high school. This is a conversational course and require replacement test. And then they would begin writing the curriculum this summer, and if approved, it would start in twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven school year. They would initially round the two sections of this course in each of the high school, which would result in one less Spanish III section and one less Spanish IV section. It will not require additional teachers, and additional costs for this course would include curriculum writing, a hundred dollars in instructional materials, and approximately fifty dollars per student. Some of these students would have taken Spanish III or IV, so some of the costs can be taken out of that estimate.
So if we approve this, that would in essence give them permission to write the curriculum?
Yep.
Okay. Look for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Carol Fabian.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Padell. Any discussion?
Yes, question.
This has Banel High School?
The teacher who's presented to us is the one head, writing the curriculum, heading the writing of the curriculum.
Right, but it'll be offered.
But it'll be offered at both high schools because it needs to address the needs of our native Spanish speakers, but also to Mr. Kennedy's point, our children who have been enrolled in the dual-language program all this time are quite fluent and can, and are not being, or, you know, properly challenged when they get to middle school by Spanish one or two, when they've been immersed in it since kindergarten.
Then I'm, I'm going to get my next question, and I'm not sure who will be able to answer it, but our foreign language requirements, will this meet the needs of our, the foreign language requirements that were just, weren't there foreign language requirements that were just increased by the state for?
Every high school student has to take one year for Connecticut state requirements. You have to take one year of a world language.
But there's, there's needs of the district to meet. I'm not explaining it correctly, and I can't think of the words. I'm asleep at this point.
Is, is this an advanced piece of?
No, 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 there's a, there's a requirement for the state that due to the number of students that speak a different language in our district, we have to meet certain requirements.
Are you thinking of the bilingual, like, there's?
I don't know what, I'm not sure what it's called.
So when you have a certain percentage of students that speak a specific language, you have to be able to offer a course or instruction in dual language, like, or bilingual class?
But weren't those, what I'm asking is, weren't those requirements just increased? And is this meeting those needs? We are currently meeting those needs, that's all we have to know.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passionately. Move down number five, second read for adoption vandalism policy. It came from the Policy Committee with a favorable recommendation, and the first read passionately, March twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five.
So moved.
Move, move to accept this as, as a, move to adopt?
Adopt.
Move to adopt? Is it a second? Seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any discussion?
I'm checking you.
No, you all saw it last time. We had an opportunity to go through. I think all the edits and technical corrections have been made, so.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Actually, I didn't do roll call vote, it's a final read. Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Ms. Padell?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Angela Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Quimby?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passionately. So the next policy came from the Policy Committee, asked to waive the first read status if we can, this, the board, if you can kind of walk us through that?
Page thirty-one. This is the wellness that you can help me there. Add to it, Ms. Waters.
For me, it's the school nutrition and wellness.
That's what it says here.
Well, it's, do nutrition and physical activities.
Oh, chaos.
I thought you might get passed over here, no worries. Okay. We did go before the Policy Committee, and as I say, we, this is one, another area of the food service program that's heavily regulated by the state, and it's part of our state mandated triennial assessment, and one component of that triennial assessment includes a review and update of our student wellness policy. We did put together our Wellness Committee, and that was made up. Sean was kind enough to be our board representative, and we also had community members, parents, students, as well as staff and faculty serve on the committee. We met three times to review this policy and to make these recommendations. The policies are, the policy revisions to our existing really coincide with what was recommended. recommended by the State Department of Education, and we looked at the Cape template as well as some surrounding communities. And it does have some additional areas, um, such as elaboration on school nutrition and physical activity overall, as well as the sections of, um, goals for physical activity have been expanded, including our goal to provide sixty minutes of physical activity daily for students, and then you will see areas such as marketing, monitoring, um, and the of community input and evaluation to the wellness policy. So there were a number of, um, revisions, but overall, I would say it's just a stronger policy that will serve as our guidelines as we move forward.
And can you explain why you've asked us to waive the first read?
I actually don't know. Um, I was under the impression, I believe, you explained to me, Teresa said that because it went to policy?
I thought we talked about the policy situation, if we bring in the first, we just want to add that to the list. Yeah, we're a little out of compliance, and so the request is, if you don't have any major questions on it, of course, if you need more time, you can have it, but if you don't have any major questions, we are out of compliance, and we would like to get in compliance.
And, and this is just a mirroring, mirroring of the language required by the state?
And we will take this policy to then complete the assessment questions that we are required to support what the district is doing based on our policy.
So I would look for a motion to waive the first read and accept this, uh, for adoption?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. O'Brien. Second by Mr. Kennedy. Uh, any discussion? Go for a roll call vote. Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Angela Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Corumier?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, motion pass unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Uh, we'll move on to the, um, policy read, um, this one's?
This one is mine.
Okay.
Um, and again, if you feel so inclined that you feel okay waiving the first read and approving this, um, I would appreciate it more for implementation purposes. Um, we did work with the board's attorney, I, Teresa and I worked with the board's attorney to update this policy, um, and for various reasons that don't need to be publicly discussed, um, the reason we need to be able to implement this is we need to be able to hold both adults and students accountable for appropriate behavior within our school property grounds. So essentially, these are our conduct expectations, and I think they're pretty clear, you know, we expect people to not disrupt or threaten, um, school operations, we expect people to not have tobacco products out and using them on school grounds, um, you know, we need to be able to have the policy to back our expectations up. So edits and changes were made to the current existing policy in order for us to be able to do so. So again, if you need more time, of course, you can have it, the sooner we get this approved and passed, the easier it is for us to implement and enforce these expectations. But I'm fine if you need more time.
Just one question. I think it's an easy answer. Or?
Go ahead, yep.
Um, on page thirty-seven, um, under standard number six?
Yes.
Um, remote platforms, can we be specific or give an example of that so that it's a little clearer?
Yes. So we have virtual PPT meetings.
Is your microphone on?
It is on.
Okay.
I'll pull it closer. Uh, we have virtual PPT meetings, sometimes you have virtual parent-teacher conference meetings, and, you know, we would expect us to be professional in that, um, interaction. And so the recommendation was to include that because not everything is in person anymore, and this policy used to read, if you, and we actually had somebody share with us, well, I wasn't on school grounds when I said it, so it doesn't matter, um, but it does matter, right? We want to be respectful in all interactions.
If we could just amend it, so just so it's clear, you know what I mean, like, to your point, like, if you just put even in parentheses example, virtual meetings, like, I think it would?
That would be helpful, yeah.
Help be helpful to people?
I think we can do that.
So, so you would like it to read instead of remote platforms, virtual?
Like a motion to amend to just include, um, under remote platforms, like the example?
We'll put parentheses and say, "Virtual parent-teacher meetings are an example."
Just put virtual meetings?
Virtual meetings, yes.
Okay. And, and, um, I, I guess if there are any other items you'd like to have added in there? I mean, I, I think we'd, we'd be okay to accept, uh, Ms. Bois's discretion, if you wanted to add a, a couple other words in there as a clarification?
I think virtual meetings covers it, I think everybody knows what those are, so if you're engaging in a virtual meeting, that counts as being on school grounds.
So it would, it would read, uh, electronic devices, remote platforms, such as virtual meetings?
Yes.
Comma, and any other verbal communication devices?
Yes. Meaning you should also be polite on the phone. If you're talking with somebody over the phone, we would expect professionalism and courtesy both ways.
So a motion to amend is stated by Ms., uh, Carol Fabian?
Second.
Um, you, Lisa, you want to make that motion?
Sure.
Yep.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to amend, um, on page thirty-seven, under standards number six, appropriate and courteous use of telephone, public address systems, electronic devices, remote platforms such as virtual meetings, and any other verbal communication devices.
Second.
Motion to amend by Ms. Carol Fabian, second by Ms. Bedell. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to amend, pass unanimously. So I'd look for a, a motion to waive the first reading and adopt as amended.
So moved by Mr. O'Brien. Second.
Second by Ms. Bedell. Uh, any discussion? Roll call vote, Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Bedell?
Ms. Bedell, yes.
Ms. Bedell, I was looking at him. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
I've been doing good, I didn't, I've recently.
You do a pass just once.
Ms. Angela Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Corumier?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, uh, the motion, uh, policy one three one six, pass unanimously. Um, Teresa, for, uh, the next item, uh, table items residency, we can, we can go ahead and pull that off as a table item moving forward. Um, and then, you know, maybe quarterly, we can, um, we can schedule, or whenever the need arises, but I don't think we need to have it. Uh, committee assignments and committee reports, uh, Curriculum Committee?
Yeah, um, so you guys heard about the, um, new curriculum that I just explained, and then, um, some of the other things that were talked about were, um, just an update on the HMH, um, professional development has been taking place all year with HMH. It was discovered that some schools received more solid training than others, and so administration, um, are working with HMH to pick three trainers and use those consistently to provide adequate training in all of the schools. Um, and then, um, a survey, um, is being sent out, or was sent out, did you get, did you get any results back yet, or?
Just went out.
Just went out. Um, asking what is working, what is not with the?
Your motions from, Ms. Mangini, from the meeting here?
Uh, plan planning, we did not meet last month, um, but we did, we will be meeting on Thursday, um, work to finalize our capital improvement plan, uh, get forwarded over to the board for next month's board meeting. Uh, once we voted out of, out of the committee, if we can forward that to the board, uh, as soon as it's done, you know, if we can do it on Thursday at your earliest convenience, instead of waiting until the, to the pony to say, "There's some time to review it." Um, I think, Rich, you have a, the copy or, anyway, if we, if we get a copy of that capital improvement to the, to Teresa? Yeah, just, I just want to make sure it's the finalized one, we, we did meet today, started the conversation with the mayor and her staff, but, uh, just make sure it's the same one, uh, if we get it to Teresa so she can send it to the committee, uh, we will be meeting Thursday. Um, so, uh, let's see, liaison committee did not meet, policy review, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, we met again April twenty-second, as you can see from the previous motions, and we've been very busy, I think the next major one we'll work on is a cell phone policy, and we continue to tackle many of the old policies and updating them. It's been a good process, been a good committee.
Mr. Corumier, anything you want to add? Uh, athletic review, Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, we met on April twenty-second as well, um, we started working on our roles and responsibilities, as talked about at our last board meeting of coming up, so we're gonna have a special meeting in May to approve that, and we'll take that to the, uh, my last meeting, um, important. Uh, the other thing that we kind of requested and just got updated on, and athletic directors gave us an overview, was the coaching evaluations yearly, um, about the dialogue and insight, um, everything, and, um, so it was just very good feedback and, um, information shared about the eighties. Anything else?
Kennedy, okay. Um, bylaws committee, or is on hold, naming committee has no business, personnel committee?
Yeah, we met to, uh, go through a couple of principal appointments, and, uh, appointed a new principal for Franklin Elementary School and Lordship Elementary School.
Thank you. Um, Kate?
Anything I was going to update you on has been updated through, um, Ms. Record from the State Board of Education, or Representative Sheik from the state, everything Kate is pushing has to do with those two bills being presented to both the House and the Senate on special education.
Uh, Ms. Kennedy, she is? Okay. Town, uh, Stratford Billy needs, did not meet last month, they'll be hopefully heading over to their meeting next Monday. Um, general welfare?
Just please feel free to join us at any of the multitude of events that are going on between now and the end of the year, um, we're happy to have anyone who can make it.
And I, and I know you talked about the CTE showcase, um, it, it was really an amazing show of some of the opportunities we offer to the students here in Stratford, um, both, we had folks both from Benel and Stratford High here, uh, if you missed it, you missed a lot of good food, there was a lot of other good things besides the food, but obviously that's one of the more, uh, palatable highlights, so, uh, it, it was just really great to see the kids, their excitement, um, most of them were proud to show off the things they've done, uh, whether it was through, uh, the architectural engineering, the, uh, they re-fab- refabricated some of the, um?
Go baby go, it's one of my favorites.
Go baby go.
They did some upgrades to kids' electric cars and supermodel up and then fit them to a student within our district and, um, it's nice.
We had our nurses, Mr. O'Brien and I need to do a little work on our blood pressure, but?
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's some doctor's appointments, and he'd be made it after meeting, so.
Uh, but then it was, it was just a great show, it was really just great to see the excitement, and, and it was a really good turnout, so just to see the community by all of this, um, I think that's an awesome, awesome step, and hopefully we can continue to expand those programs, you know? Uh, in that being said, anything else?
Yeah, I want to mention, uh, I attended the Healthy Kids Event at the YMCA on Saturday, and saw Jenna Bernardo, the Benel representative, volunteering, and got to meet her mother, and then reunited with her former biology teacher, Bob Maschroni.
Oh, wow.
Nice. And you're winning an award soon, right?
Oh, yes, the Sterling House Celebrity Breakfast Tickets. You have to get the ticket quick if you want to go, May fifteenth, seven thirty a.m. Chris Mad Dog Russo's our speaker, he is a character, and I'm receiving the Sterling Spirit Award. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, special call out to our middle schools that are starting their state testing this week, and it's, good luck to them.
I went to the Best Luncheon this past week, and it was very lovely to see all the recipients of the best award, so it was very nice. It was lovely that Bob got surprised.
Yeah?
Doesn't happen often.
Yeah, well, a lot of good things going on in Stratford, so.